All right, we are live. Hello everyone and welcome to another edition of the Get Growing Weekly Work Session with Get Oiling. I'm Coach Ashley and today we are going to talk about lead magnets. This is our second in a series of trainings all about funnels. This is a funnel 101 series. These things don't necessarily get built in this order. In fact, we're kind of creating them backwards, but it's important that you know what all of these things are. You may be at different steps in the process and so on. Last week, we talked about landing pages. This week, we're talking about lead magnets. And then next week, we are going to finish up with campaigns. Those are the three main components of a funnel. What a funnel ultimately is, is a thing that exists to get information out there. It's about credibility, relationships, and trust with people before you have a conversation with them, so that they're more ready to get to the nitty gritty of what it is that you can do to help them with, i.e. get them started with Young Living. So come on over and let me know that you're here in the chat. Tell me where you're coming in from. Super excited to see you guys here today. Team is super busy over in the support inbox. You guys give them some love if you're back and forth in there and let them know how much you love those guys. They are really, really busy here lately with all of our new members and helping you guys out and building your business. So thank you for being here. Hello, we got Canada, Phoenix, St. Augustine, UK, Ontario, San Antonio, Pittsburgh. We love you guys. Hey, really excited to have you here. I am currently in Brooklyn, New York, where I've been for the past few years, but maybe not for long. Whoa, I'm really, really excited. We've actually just been looking at some places upstate and maybe we'll be updating you here soon about what that means. Anyway, I've got some slides to go over with you today. If you're brand new, hi, welcome. We do this every week at noon Eastern time. You can go to getoiling.com/weeklyworksession to get access to this. If you see this as a recording and you would like to join us live. So without further ado, I am going to head on over to my slides. And what I'm going to do, you guys, because it's just me here today, I will be trying to keep up with the chat as much as possible. But make sure if you came here with questions today, that you go ahead and hit that Q and A box. If you've got those questions, because I'm probably going to miss you entirely if you don't. So make sure that you go over to Q and A and add your questions there. So let's go ahead and share and get started with our lead magnet training. All right, and actually, before I do that, let me turn off my video so you guys can see the slides better. All right, now, if you're watching this and you are on our list, then you already know that you've got these slides in your inbox. Be looking for them along with the replay and linked below this recording. Really, the idea here, you guys, is for you to understand the why behind what you do and then take the slides that are here and then go do the thing, right? You are going to get more confident with creating things in your system by doing things. We're never going to be perfect ahead of time. There is no amount or number of hours that you can watch these trainings that is going to replace the power of you just getting in there and getting it wrong, right? All right, so let's get in here and get this done so you understand how this stuff works so that you can create successful funnels for your business. So again, if you've got questions, you guys, add those to the Q and A so that I can get to them after our training here. So in today's training, we are going to cover what lead magnets are, what they do for your business, the different types of lead magnets, and the elements of a great lead magnet. And of course, three types that you can make. And I'll show you exactly the breakdown of all of it inside your Get Oiling account so that you can take the slides that you got from today and go create this lead magnet in your system today. All right, and then of course, we'll have that live Q and A after the training. So again, you want to get on our list. We are getoiling.com/weeklyworksession. That will allow you to get access to these live trainings and join us on our future work sessions. So go ahead and grab that worksheet. If you didn't get it last week, it came to your email and it'll be linked below the recording on YouTube. We got a funnel planner. Guys, if you have, if you decided that you wanted to create a funnel, this is the first thing that you should do before you even go and log into our system. And this is especially if you aren't like a green sort of right brain person, you know, who's really good at, you know, at figuring out tech things and it doesn't overwhelm you. It's really important, no matter who you are, that you plan before you go and open up. That means you're writing ahead of time. That means you're clear on exactly what you want this thing to do for you. So if you just follow these things in order on this sheet, it is a fillable PDF that you can actually create. You can type your answers to directly. You don't even have to print this out. So you can break down exactly what the steps are you want them to follow, what you want this thing to do, what you're going to be giving away, which if you look at that, what are you promising in exchange for this contact information? That is the lead magnet. That is the part that we are talking about today. You want to be clear in how that ties into the funnel, meaning, once they get this lead magnet, what are the next questions that they're going to be asking themselves? That's going to lead them to wanting to be in on a conversation or a call with you, right? And then, of course, we move on through the rest of this. So all of this ties together through these three trainings. Make sure that you have printed this out and you have followed it through to fruition before you move on to next step. So anybody here, just quick show of hands, do you have a funnel working in your business? Who's got funnels? I know a lot of you guys are in Martha's Go For Gold. Maybe you're in the Home Business Revolution. You're getting started with this stuff. You guys, funnels are where it's at. They save you so much time and help to connect you with more qualified leads. Oh my gosh, like how about this? Maybe let's take our hands down. If I could show you a way to, maybe not tomorrow, but even if it's 90 days from now, have a consistent lineup of 10 people a week who already find you credible, know that you know what they want to know, and they want to have a conversation with you. How many of you would love to set something up this week that 90 days from now could have five, 10 people a week who are like, hey, I need your help and I'm, I'm, I'm ready to hear. Please sell me something, right? Wouldn't that be amazing? Guys, that's what funnels do. It's really important for you to get good at making and using these because they give you your time back and allow you to not have to feel awkward or feel like you gotta chase people because you are now the qualified person that they're ready to come and talk to when they're ready. They don't feel pressured. They don't feel pushed. They don't feel sold to. They come to you and basically say, hey, sell me please. It's pretty awesome. All right, so let's talk about what a lead magnet is. Now, this is the thing that makes people want to give you their contact information. This is the thing that you're promising to give away on your landing page. All right, now, how many of you, just a quick show of hands, have opted into someone's funnel before? Right, you see a thing, you're like, oh, I really want that shopping list or I really want that infographic or that video or that training, right? You've, okay, so most of us have done this, right? Probably all of us. You land on a landing page, this expert or authority or someone that you trust well enough knows a thing. They want to show you a thing and the exchange is, give me your contact info because I'm going to be dropping some emails in your inbox, right? You can do text with this as well, of course. But, but the lead magnet is ultimately the thing that you are delivering that's important to them. So this can come in the form of a guide, a video, a newsletter, an email series. There's really no end in sight to this. I mean, you could technically use a free course inside of a vault and Get Oiling if you wanted to do that. There, you could do an ebook. I've listed here some of the most effective things to do. Because while you can do very complicated and big things, the most important thing you need to know about a lead magnet is that it needs to deliver something that's highly specific and relevant and useful in a short period of time. Always remember that online, no matter how much they like you, their attention span is super, super short, like eight seconds goldfish levels short. So you want to give them something that's going to give them tremendous value in a brief period of time. All right, so this, like I just mentioned, it gives them a specific, highly desired result quickly. It also builds trust and authority with your ideal people, right? How grateful are you when someone shares something with you? How much more do you trust someone who has shared something with you that has given you a benefit that you weren't able to get on your own? Right, tell me in the comments. Doesn't that make a difference? Do you want people to know, like, and trust you more so that they're ready to say yes when you share Young Living with them, right? Because you paid it forward and gave them something that gave a benefit to their life, that helped them solve a problem. That's what we're doing with a lead magnet. And it gives them a reason, most importantly, to take next steps with you. Because we're not just creating a lead magnet or just creating a funnel for the sake of it. We're creating this because what we're trying to do, if you imagine the shape of a funnel, is move them down to that narrowest part where you're, you're able to have shown Young Living to them and they give you an answer, right? That's down at the narrow part. We don't go, you know, throwing Young Living and buy from me up here at the top, top of the funnel where all the whole world is. No, because that's not what they want. You give them what they want that gives them something that's a benefit to them and it moves them down the bottom of the funnel toward where they learn about Young Living from you because they're ready and they're ready to take next steps, right? Whole purpose of that funnel. All right, so let's talk about the types of lead magnets that you can use for this purpose. First, and I'm going to show you how to make all of these, you guys. So first, you've got an email series. This is a really great, easy, simple way to get something done, right? If you've got something that is, that's sort of like, like a step by step, you know? So I'm going to, I'm going to teach you in five days how to clean out your pantry so that you can start your new gluten-free lifestyle, right? And you, you send out an email a day for five days. That's just one example of something that you can do. So you can set those up inside of campaigns and Get Oiling. Video is another spectacular way to deliver a lead magnet. This would be something, again, that's highly specific and relevant. Maybe it's a how-to or a DIY. Maybe it's some kind of exclusive information that you typically only share with paying clients or with your members. But you want to give this little bit of, of something away, pay it forward to bring people closer into the funnel, right? So this is something that can be embedded on a Get Oiling custom page. A guide is another type of lead magnet. And for those of you who are in Martha's Creches Go For Gold, you know about this one already. The guide is something that you can use. This can be a shopping guide. It can be an article. And of course, you can create an upload in a PDF and I'll show you where you can go to learn how to do that. Or you can create a guide, like I'm going to show you today, on a Get Oiling custom page. So this is where you might include recipes. You might break down some kind of more complex topic or explain a process. But basically, just think about it like a white paper or an article or some kind of exclusive bit of information. So these are the three things that we are going to learn how to make today that are lead magnets that will live inside of your Get Oiling system and be connected to your funnels. All right, so what is in a lead magnet then, right? What are, what are the components? So it's really important for you guys to understand that you have everything you need right now to make this. You do not need to go out and learn something new or do something different or, you know, paint yourself to be something other than you are. The fact is, what is completely obvious to you, the stuff that you do every day, the stuff that you realized a million years ago and that you incorporated into your life and it's just been great for you ever since, you're not even thinking about those things, right? Because what's obvious to you is magic to someone else and you're not looking for the obvious, right? It's very easy to make this complicated. So knowing that you will eventually want to talk oils with these people, what is something that you know how to do right now that can make their life significantly better this week? Let's see some of this in the chat. What are you guys thinking? If, if you could show somebody, just, I mean, knowing that you want to eventually talk about oils, what's something that you can show someone how to do this week that can significantly improve their life? Anybody got any ideas? Come over into the chat and let's hear them. Add oils to cooking? Yes, that's great, Jean. What are some more things? Think about some things that are maybe not even oily, right? Because we want to eventually talk oils. What are some things that you know that have changed your life that can help lead the way? How to have more energy? Five steps to energy-free running? I love it, I love it, you guys, this is good. Cooking with coping skills for reducing meltdowns? Oh my goodness, Tammy, put that in a lead magnet. Mamas are going to love that, especially if they have toddlers, but maybe also teenagers. I want to read that. Let's see, how to reduce environmental toxins at home and why it's important? How to get a good night's sleep? How to squeeze in 30 minutes of exercise a day? Guys, these are great. These are great, excellent. So you guys are getting it. So think about something and I highly encourage you guys, don't oil this. Do not oil your lead magnet. You can oil your lead magnet, but you don't want to kind of jump the shark here, right? The whole purpose of this is to lead a breadcrumb trail to where when they are ready, they're like, give me the cake, okay? You want them to ask you for the cake. You don't want to put the cake in front of them until they ask for it. So what you do is with your content, that's your blog posts, your social posts, and then of course, your lead magnets, you're bringing them closer down the funnel. So give them something that can help provide a significant benefit to their life today to show that you can pay it forward without trying to sell them something right away. Build that trust with them, okay? That's what your lead magnet is going to be. So if you're having trouble with this, think about who you were before you knew what you know right now. What were your frustrations, right? What were the things that kept you up at night, that nagged you during the day? What were the things that you just felt like you couldn't figure out? And what did you struggle to get figured out, right? Because this person that you want to be reaching is probably dealing with those same things. And, and what things worried you, right? What were the things that you were concerned that if you never figured this out, that life might not look so great down the road? So let's talk about how you can give that person peace of mind, a game plan, or a time saver, some kind of immediate benefit, right? We want to give them a win. Give them something that is going to truly actually help them so that you can build that trust. Because remember, your big picture goal here with your content marketing and your posting is not just to get in front of the people who are in your warm market. You're already in front of them, but it's to attract people who don't even know you. And how are you going to get them to trust you enough to want to get on a conversation with you and for you to share Young Living with them? You've got to pay it forward with value first, all right? So what goes in a lead magnet? First, you can include your backstory. And again, importantly, guys, I encourage you, don't go crazy oily or using, using Young Living or Young Living words specifically in your backstory. You want to pique curiosity so that they ask you questions, so that they ask for the cake, right? This is a breadcrumb trail. Get them hungry so they ask for it, okay? The next, and then of course, you want to make sure that you give them the thing that they came for, right? You can tell them a little bit about, okay, this is who I am and this is why you should listen to me, right? That's your backstory. And then, here's what you came for. Here's what I promised. You know, here is how you can keep your kids from melting down in a tantrum. And in this case, of course, you know, if that involves putting some oils in a diffuser, that's perfectly fine. Give a little recipe and then maybe at the bottom of the lead magnet, you say something to the effect of, hey, listen, not all oils are created equal. I, I actually love educating folks on this fact. If that's something you're interested in learning more about, then contact me, right? And that's, of course, the call to action. And that's to take the next steps with you. Because remember, again, this lead magnet isn't just to get leads. We're not stacking numbers here. We are moving people at the pace that they are ready to follow further down the funnel toward that one-on-one conversation with you. If you think about this, and I've described this in a number of our trainings, as sort of like your, your funnel or your pipeline is a popcorn popper, all right? If you can imagine like a stove top or campfire or maybe the stove top's probably going to be more. If anybody, maybe show of hands, somebody have a Jiffy Pop? I love those old school popcorn poppers where you just put it on the stove and you stir it. Anyway, so yeah, there you go, I see you. So, so think about your funnel, your pipeline and your business, which is sort of like this whole lifespan of how leads become your members, is you've got all these popcorn kernels in the pot, right? And you're stirring the pot and you're applying heat to the pot and that's through your content and the stuff that's in this funnel, right? Everybody in that pot is a piece of popcorn. Does, do all of the kernels pop at once? No. Do some of them pop right away and some of them never pop, right? Yes. So your, your funnel is going to be very much like that. So when they're ready, if they're ready, they're going to say, I'm ready. I want to take next steps with you. Does that make sense? Just quick show of hands. The whole point of all of this, you guys, is to move people toward readiness so that when they're ready, they say, let's go, right? How much easier would that make your life if that was the way your business was running? All right, so this is what's in your lead magnet. You tell them why they should listen to you. You give them what they came for and you tell them what to do next, like get on a call with you or join your lead group or something to that effect. And just remember, guys, don't overthink this. There is something that you know how to do right now that is simple and doable and easy. And there are people out, like, out there right now who will say that you changed their life because of this one thing that you shared with them. Don't overthink it. What is magic to someone else is just a thing that's obvious and everyday to you, all right? And don't over-oil it because this is a breadcrumb trail and you're not trying to shove the cake in the face when they haven't said they're hungry yet, all right? Now, the whole point of the funnel, remember, is to pique curiosity and build trust so that they want to talk with you one-on-one. That's down there at the bottom of the funnel where you share Young Living. They say yes. And then you all move on like a team to the promised land. All right, so now that you know what you want to make, what you want to give away, let's talk about your delivery method. First, if you want to have a series of emails, this can be a sequential step-by-step. This is, you know, if it's linear, right? Like five days to this outcome, you give an email per day, right? This is great for a linear, step-by-step kind of process that you want to share. Just make sure that you keep it simple and doable. Don't make the emails novel length unless you are a really great storyteller, okay? Video is, is a great way to do this as well. This is really ideal if you have something visual to show or if you are someone who's just really better at talking off the cuff and providing that kind of detail and, you know, and you're really comfortable with getting in front of a camera. This is a great way to build relationships with people. It's really fantastic. So it's ideal for visual and make sure you pack it with value and make it something that feels really exclusive, right? There's a lot of free content out there. They really need to feel like you are going straight in and talking to the problem they have that they want to solve right now. Because you're right, people are going to understand that the way you're delivering it is unlike any they've seen before and exactly what they need to hear and they're going to be grateful for it. All right, and then finally, a guide, which is a really popular thing to use, of course, on our platform in particular. This is really great for principles, worksheets, or for long-form content like an article or if you want to use citations and link off to things. If you want something that's a bit richer, you can use this. And of course, you could also use a number of these together, actually. What I often do in funnels is I use all of them. I'll have a video that teaches something, a, a principle beneath it that helps them to put the thing to use. And then the series of emails, which we'll be going over in our next training about campaigns, is going to continue to expound upon those concepts and again, move them in that call to action toward a call, right? So you can pick one or you could do them all. It's up to you. It only has to be one though, right? You just pick one of these, keep it simple if you're just getting started, all right? So now, let's talk about how we make these in Get Oiling. So first, let's talk about our email series. Now, remember, guys, right now, we're not going to go over and like click through the whole site. What I'm doing here is I'm showing you exactly with notes where to click and what to do so that you can take these notes, which you can download and use to follow along and create your own stuff after this call. You're going to have access to that, right? So that's what I'm showing you right now and you can then use these in your own system. So let's talk about how we set up an email-based lead magnet. First, you want to plan it. This is, you know, the frequency, is this every day, every other day? Is it 10 steps and you do it for 10 days? Do you break those apart? How do you want to set that up? There's no science to this. You just go with it, right? Then importantly, just like I mentioned before, planning is so critical. You want to write this all out in a word processor so that you can just copy it into your campaign editor and, you know, edit and, and format it to your liking, all right? Then head on over to Get Oiling there and of course, create that campaign. Attach this campaign to your landing page. And then, of course, if you are using a thank you page, you would, and this, this actually is the best thing to do in this instance, if you are giving away just an email series as a lead magnet, make sure you're using a thank you page on the other side. Because that will make sure that they're going and checking their email to make sure that they received it and check their junk folder and add you to their, their address book and all that kind of good stuff, right? So this is how you should set this up. Now, here's how you create it. First, you're going to go over to contact settings. When you click that, you're going to click campaigns. And then you're going to scroll down till you see this little green create campaign button and click it. All right, now we're on the create campaign page. These are the campaign settings. You're going to give it a name and then of course, you're going to add your name over here. I prefer personally, email only. You could do email and text. This gets a little more complicated. If you want it to be text, just like if you want to do a text campaign and that's how you want to roll, that's fine. I believe in building email lists. I don't know a single six or seven-figure earner in this industry who does not use email for this process. Success leaves clues. Let's just go with the recommendation here that you go with email on this. And if anybody tells you that people don't open emails, they don't know the people who are really making a big dent in this industry right now. All right, so I recommend using email only to keep things simple. If you do absolutely want to reinvent the wheel, go text with this. Use that text and keyword if you want to do it that way. You can also use a landing page and require a phone number and that can trigger a text campaign. All right, and then of course, you hit create campaign. Now, you are, you will then line up, wind up on this page here where you will create your first message. So after you've edited your campaign details, you land here and you are going to use these settings. You want this to deliver right away. Most of the time, you want to use this for most funnels, so just ASAP. That's already going to be selected for you. These are a little more advanced over here off to the right. Starting on a specific date is something you might do if this is a campaign for a, a launch that has a set date, a set series of dates. If you do not feel advanced, then don't bother with these. You don't need them at all. Just go ahead and click that green write new message button and let's start writing the campaign messages that you have already created. All right, so make sure that in your subject line, you are very clear and engaging. And what I'm showing you right here is a day zero email. This is what comes immediately right away. What you should always do in your day zero or immediate send out email is to set expectations. Let them know, hey, you're going to want to add my information to your address book, even if you said this on your thank you page. Reiterate it here. It's always good to back yourself up with reiteration. And then, you know, you may also want to include some specific expectations. You can say, over the next five days, I'll be sending you an email a day that gives you a specific instruction. Here's what you do with it. Feel free to, you know, hit reply and let me know if you have any questions or maybe ask them a very specific question if you wanted to do that. Now, again, if you wanted to turn this into a text campaign, you can use images and the field down here below it if you wanted to do that. And then, of course, down here for country, for me, I've never changed this. 90% of the time or more, you're going to leave this as all. The only instance where I think you could see this being something you would want to change is that if you were talking about specific Young Living product lines, maybe for your members, and you wanted the information to be available to the specific markets that you are teaching on, right? Most of the time, none of you are going to use this. All right, so we hit add message and now we see it here. It's going to show that it's sent on day zero, which means right away. If you selected email only in the campaign details, you got no need to change this send by here. There are advanced features if you are at premium and up in your membership level that allow you to send at specific times of day or to change whether an email is sent via text or email and that kind of thing. You can send a, you know, one minute later, a text message that points them to their email and says, hey, I just sent you an email, that kind of thing, if you wanted to. Guys, if you're just getting started, don't even complicate this for yourself. Keep it simple, all right? And then you're going to click that green button and write your next message. So once I've done that, there we go. I'm going to click this little box down here where you see the number one. This is going to show up as zero. So I'm just going to click up on that and click off the box and it's going to turn that into one. And what that means is, is that this is going to send 24 hours after the first one, all right? So one's immediate, one is the next day. Now, if you wanted to have two sent on the first day, meaning you've got the confirmation and then the next steps, or if you wanted to combine those into one, you can certainly do that. Again, this is not rocket science. You will learn over time what your audience best responds to, all right? And then, of course, you're going to click that green button there for the rest of the emails that you are going to write, all right? So we got Alison Loves that we're not going through this live. Yeah, you guys, I, I know that it can be very beneficial for some to actually like see the whole thing walked through, but that ultimately winds up in like three hour long trainings. And I think that this is something that you'll be able to actually take and use like side by side when you're working. So I really hope that this helps you. All right, so let's talk about best practices for these campaigns. First, I want to share with you a concept that I learned from one of the best or if not be best email marketer in the current era, a guy named Ryan Dice of Digital Marketer. He talks about spending, sending spear emails. And what this means is short, specific, and expecting a response. You should send these at least once in your campaigns or you should just be thinking about, this is like a philosophy as to how you are communicating with your leads. You want to talk with them, excuse me, you want to talk with them like you would be talking with your best friend one-on-one and you want to move them as quickly as they are interested toward the outcomes that you want this thing to produce for you. So if you want them to book a call with you, then you're going to maybe ask them a very specific question. Say, you know, hey, are you looking for help with blank thing that's related to your lead magnet, right? And say, hit reply, let me know. That's a really quick, short email, right? It's enormously effective.[1734.49] It's enormously effective. If you can get people responding to the emails that you send in campaigns, that's people who are showing up and saying, hey, I want a conversation with you. So create those opportunities in the copy of your emails. Opt for more short messages over fewer long ones unless you're a great storyteller. You really want to think about your own preferences when you're reading emails. I know if you're like, if you're like me and you have like 20,000 unread ones because you never seem to remember to unsubscribe from things you opt into. Or you are studying copywriting and you're watching what other people are doing. I highly recommend that you do that, by the way. Make sure that you are mindful of the length because you want people to actually engage and take action, right? You don't want to give them a novel a day. And then importantly, like I just mentioned, you want to write like you're speaking to your best friend. Obviously, campaigns are something that can be sent out to one or 100,000 people at a time, at any period of time. And people really want to feel heard. They want to feel like they're hearing from you and that you care about them and that you want to speak with them. So write like you're talking to them so that they will respond in conversation with you. And don't forget your call to action, of course. All of this is designed, is meant to produce the outcome of you having a conversation with the people who are most interested in what you're talking about. All right, now let's talk about video. Video is a really powerful way for you to deliver value as a lead magnet. How you're going to set that up is to first plan it. What are you going to talk about? Here's the, you know, the three steps I'm going to show. Film it, of course. Upload it to a hosting site. We recommend and use Vimeo for this purpose. I don't recommend YouTube for this because this is a lead magnet. This is a thing people have to opt in and give their information to you for, in order to see it, right? So if it's on YouTube, that means just anybody can see it. And why would they give you their contact information and wind up on your list, right? So highly recommend Vimeo for this purpose. You're going to take that link from Vimeo after you upload it and embed that on a Get Oiling custom page. You'll then redirect to this page from your landing page or redirect to that thank you page we've talked about and then link to this page from inside your campaign. Bonus, if you put contact, hashtag contact, I'll show you what this looks like in the button below your video with a call to action to reach out to you. This is a great way to initiate the conversation from right there on the page. So let's look at how we set that up. First, you're going to head over to my site settings and go to custom pages. Then scroll down to see create page and click it. I really like for videos, when this little screen pops up to select the professional services template. This is a great template to use for videos because it's kind of laid out perfectly. A lot of our video lead magnet funnels, like the accelerator that maybe a lot of you guys have seen, is built using this exact template. So this is what you're going to do, right? So here's what it's going to look like. We are going to change the copy on this page. So tell them why they should maybe sit down and watch the whole video. What are they going to get out of this? And then we're going to delete that image because we're going to embed your video here on the next step. You also want to just go ahead and delete using that little trash can icon all of the sections beneath this one on this template. You won't need any of the other ones. I really don't recommend on lead magnets having much things to click off on because we want them to engage in the content, get the benefit, and then move further down the funnel. The moment that you give someone more than one option, know that they probably won't take any options. Give them one, make it be that button after they watch the video, all right? So if we're going to embed the video, what we'll do after we delete that photo is we're going to put our little cursor, click right there in the space between the copy, right? In between that headline and that subtext. And then you're going to click that little video icon there. You're going to paste in your video link. I'm using a YouTube one here, use the one from Vimeo that you have. And then you are going to edit your button. So we're going to edit that button with a clear call to action. So in this case, I'm leaving schedule a free consultation. You may want to use something totally different and in your own, your own sort of natural language. Now, you can, in this URL field here, use hashtag contact if you want your contact box to pop up. This will show your face, it'll show how to connect with you and a form for them to enter some information. You could also use, like turn this into a lead page, right? You can have a lead box pop up if they click this button and they can maybe apply for a call with you. As you may have seen in previous weekly work sessions where we talked about call booking funnels. All right, so you're going to click on the button. You're going to click the edit link button and then you're going to change the URL and the text, all right? Now importantly, if you want this button to go to a, let's just say you have a free Facebook group that you want to invite them to and that's your call to action. That is where you would take the URL, the address for your Facebook group and put that in the URL field and then use open in new tab. That is the only instance where you would want to include the checking open in new tab box, all right? Then make sure you hit update and then you've got your page. So when you're done, it'll look a little bit like this in your editor. And then make sure that the copy looks how you want it to. The button connects to the link or to the direction that you want it to go and make sure that call to action is clear. Then go up to your settings. Make sure, like we do for any lead magnet, you want to make sure this is by link only and you want to not give them any options, right? So it's only published, no header, no footer, okay? Now, if you use lead on your button, hashtag lead on your button and you want to offer them a call or something like that that they can apply for from this page, you're going to want to change those lead capture settings in kind. All right, so once you've got this set up the way that you want, you're going to hit save and view and then check out your page, all right? So this page, this lead magnet down here on the left, this is what you would link to either directly off of your landing page or in your email if you're using a thank you page, all right? Let's talk about our best practices for this. First, make sure this is high value, hyper relevant and specific. Nobody likes fluff content, right? Over deliver on this and they'll love you for it. Respect their time, making sure that you are really helping them in the best way that you know how inside of the shortest period of time possible so that they can really get that result, right? I'm not saying be crazy short for the sake of being short, but you know, don't fluff it up. All right, don't sell, don't sell, don't sell. What we're doing with a lead magnet is we are delivering value to establish trust and credibility and open the door to future conversation. If we pitch here, we're closing the door, right? Quick show of hands, that makes sense, right? We're not pitching, we're not, we're not talking Gary, we're not talking seed to seal, we're not talking young living. We are talking what can I do right now to help you get a result in your life? We're building trust here, all right? And then, of course, importantly, just like in your copy, talk like you're speaking to your best friend. And don't forget the call to action. You're doing this for a reason. You want them to take those next steps with you. If you are inviting them to your Facebook group, click the link below the video or click the link below on this page. If you are inviting them to have a call with you, click the button on and on, right? Give specific and clear calls to actions. All right, now, here's your guide. This is the third type of lead magnet you're going to learn. And the final one, you're going to learn on how to use and create these lead magnets inside of Get Oiling. So here's how you set up a guide in Get Oiling. First, you plan it, just like you do anything else. And just like we talked about on our landing pages training, you're going to have copy, creative and a call to action, right? And inside your copy, you're going to have a headline and a body, right? Plan this out. How do you want this lead magnet to be delivered? Is this an article? Is it like a white paper? Is it a recipe guide? Is it a shopping list? What is it for you, right? Write it out, get it clear, make sure you got all the words in your word processor and then head over to Get Oiling and create your guide in custom pages. You're going to then, once it's created, redirect from this page from your landing page or redirect to a thank you page and link to this page from your campaign. Bonus, again, you can do this just like we did on the video guide that we just created. You can put hashtag contact in the button below your guide with a call to action to reach out to you if you want your contact box to pop up and you don't want to have to create an additional funnel to move them through closer to a call. Now, that's what I personally like to do, but you know, you got to start somewhere, right? All right, so first, we're going to head over to create this. We're going to get over to my site settings, select custom pages and hit create page. We are then going to use the product info template when this screen pops up. This is a really great template to create guides. A lot of this stuff is kind of already formatted for you. You just need to replace some images and some copy and you're good to go, all right? So here's what I recommend. This very, very top section here that says my name, when you actually view this page, it will show the name that you have loaded into your Get Oiling account. So you don't have to change this. You could also upload your logo here if you have a logo or you could just delete the section entirely, up to you. All right, so you got your headline here. Make sure that your headline aligns with what you're promising on your landing page. Try to use similar language as much as possible, right? Because congruency is what I'm talking about here. If somebody lands on a landing page and they're like, oh yeah, I want that guide about X, Y, and Z. You better have X, Y, and Z in this headline or they're going to think that they got sent something wrong, right? And they're going to be like, wait, what? I'm not reading this. Okay, make sure you've got congruency between your landing page and your headline here because that's going to keep the attention in line, right? We're going to keep alignment here. So of course, change out the copy, swap out your image. Pretty simple. You can duplicate this section by clicking those two little pages and you can move duplicated sections up and down on the page if you want to create sort of an alternating, an alternating effect because the next one down on this page is this cute little heart-shaped lemon. You're going to want to replace your copy here. Again, you can reformat and not use bullets if that's what you wanted to do. You could duplicate this section as well. Basically, you're going to want to duplicate that minty section and this lemony section as often as you need them in alternating order or just use one of them to accommodate all of the copy you intend to use. And of course, what I recommend, and if you guys are in Mark this go for gold, you've already kind of seen this in action. I'm going to delete all of the rest of the sections below these three, right? So we've got the minty one, the lemon one, and the name one up at the top that you can keep or toss. But definitely toss the ones below this one unless you just feel really confident in your editing skills and you want to format your content in these different ways. One thing that I will recommend also is for this button, I wouldn't use this button until the very end of your guide so that you're using the button for a call to action, right? So all you have to do is just click on that and just backspace it out and it disappears. All right, so once you've got that copy done and you've got everything set up on your page to your liking, you're going to go up to the settings, you're going to give it a name. You're going to have that by link only. This is exactly like the video one that we just covered, right? No footer, no header, give them nowhere else to go, but click the button to take the next steps, right? So give it a name and of course, again, if you're using lead, right? Contact is just going to pop up your contact with your picture and you don't have to do anything else. Lead, you're going to need to change the lead capture settings, connect another campaign and on and on. That's a bit more advanced. All right, so once you have done that, you want to hit save and view and then check out your lead magnet guide. This is more or less what it's going to look like over here on the left. So make sure if you've got a button there that's supposed to go somewhere or pop something up that you click through, confirm that it's working. And then, of course, you'll take the URL of this finished page and either connect that to your landing page as a redirect or put it in your campaign in your funnel to deliver from there when you redirect to a thank you page. So let's talk about finally, best practices for creating a guide as a lead magnet. First, again, high value, hyper relevant, specific. Help them get a result, tell them something they didn't know. Frame it in a way that they might not have thought of before. Give them a way to solve a problem that matters to them, all right? And respect their time, fight the fluff, okay? And again, don't sell, deliver value. This is all about establishing trust and moving people who are ready, who are in alignment with what you have to offer and who you are. Move them toward asking you for what's next, right? Bread from trail, let them ask for cake. All right, and then, again, as always, write like you are speaking to your best friend because they want to feel like they're your best friend, right? Write like you're talking to them directly and don't forget your call to action. So if you want to build a funnel with a PDF guide, we do have a whole course that teaches this for free. GetOiling.com/getleads actually walks you through all the funnel stuff too. And it shows you how to make a guide that you can turn into a PDF, that you can upload into your system, that you can redirect to from your funnels or link to in your campaigns. That's at GetOiling.com/getleads. And always, guys, remember to save, view and test what you make to make sure it looks how you want and behaves how you want before you link it up into your funnels so you can be confident that what you're sharing is going to produce the results that you want. All right, so who's excited to get to work on this? This is a big one. All right, so now we're going to head over to Q and A. When I pop all of my, look at you guys, y'all are ready to work. I'm excited for you. All right, so let me turn my video back on. Thank you, guys. Glad we've made it through this successfully. I'm going to open up the Q and A here. I understand if this is overwhelming. I just showed you three different ways that you can create a lead magnet for your funnel. You can just pick one of those and go back and download the slides for this and just do one of those things. It's going to walk you through, the slides will walk you through. Here's how you create the email series. Here's how you create the video page. Here's how you create this other page. Just pick one, just pick one. If, you know, if you're feeling squirrely, go for all of them, it's up to you. But definitely recommend that you just pick one. The slides should be in your inbox if you received an invite to this call today. They will be sent out with the replay as well, as well as embedded below the replay of this video on YouTube. All right, so I'm going to head over to Q and A. All right, so guys, if you are, I know I'm seeing quite a lot of, you know, this is kind of overwhelming. What do I offer? I think there were some really great ideas that were shared here. I think the most important thing that you can do when you're thinking about creating your lead magnet is to keep it simple and authentic to you. So one of the really simple things that you can consider doing is taking a step back and considering like, what are some of the bigger changes that have taken place in your life since you started oiling your life, right? Because oiling is not the only habit that you developed, is it? You very likely changed some other very significant parts of your daily routine that have also contributed in a big way. Maybe your mindset has shifted. Maybe some of your patterns and habits around how you communicate, using conscious language, has shifted. Think about those things, think about the periphery, right? Just make a list of all of the things that you are grateful to know and have and be. And then just start thinking about if, you know, if I could show somebody how to do that in three steps or what the three concepts are that, you know, can help them to move closer to that. That's enough. You have enough right now, right? So understand, and this is really important. Funnels are not like a super linear thing, right? Not everybody, not every kernel of popcorn is going to pop, right? Sometimes people really need a lot of time and that's where content comes in. Sometimes people, actually, most of the time, people are kind of averse to being promoted to and sold to. And that's why we don't want to oil this stuff too much, right? Because we can't in our minds draw like this direct line between like, oh, I'm going to give them a guide that has a recipe and bam, they're going to be ready to get on the phone and talk about young living. That may happen sometimes, you know? But that's, that's kind of like saying like, oh, I post my young living link on social media and maybe somebody signed up once, but it's not like the thing that happens the majority of the time. You want to have your bases covered. You want to be able to, you know, to catch everybody and to be able to nurture everybody. And that's what this funnel system, that's what these do for you. You want to be able to nurture people so that when they're ready, they say they're ready. And you can be detached from the outcome as to whether or not this person or that person wants it or says yes, right? It's a mindset shift, right? All right. Make sure if you've got questions, put them in the Q and A because I'm about to get on this Q and A list right now. So if you put them in the chat, I may very well miss you. All right, so just click Q and A and add those questions. Brenda asks about the Get Oiling website. When I have mine set up, the blog tab is the only one not highlighted. When people come to my site, it looks like that tab is not available. I don't want to use my blog as my landing page. I still want it on the tab. I just like to, you want the tab to look like the other options. So what I would do is actually go to your menu settings. This is going to be on the same page as your custom pages. There's, and it's in another couple of places too. So if you go to my site settings and click custom pages, down where it says create page, there's also a button there to edit your site menu. So note where, like how your blog is connected in that site menu and just use the same settings that you see for the other items. Because what's probably happening there is that there's not a link there that needs to be there or it's just set up differently and you just need to adjust a setting there. All right, Alison says, I'm not sure how this is happening, but today I had on my Get Oiling reminder email to connect with someone. When I clicked on them, I realized she had responded to a chat text a month ago and I never saw it. How did I miss this? I get text notifications and email when someone responds to my chat. Alison, I'm really not sure. I mean, I would just say shoot a message to support because if you've got that setting there, that you definitely should have received that. So definitely support at GetOiling.com. Let's make sure that there's nothing wrong or nothing there that could have messed up. Definitely do make a practice though. And I think that this is, this is an important daily habit that's in the beginning, it's going to feel like something kind of big because most habits, however small they are, feel very big until they become a habit. But get into your system every day. Have a look at your dashboard, who's opening emails and that kind of thing. Who's clicking links, who's engaging? And then just have a quick look at your chat and, you know, just have that be what you do just like you would check your email inbox, right, on your phone or your computer. Do that daily and then weekly, upload your VO. So do that all the time. And actually, if you're, and if you were, if you have a large team and your team is growing frequently, you may even want to upload your VO several times a week or have an assistant do that for you. But definitely, please, Alison, reach out to support so we can make sure there's nothing wrong with the settings for your updates. Let's see, how to make thieves wipes, that's an interesting one. So that's, actually, I like the idea there. What I would say though, is that you don't say how to What I would say though, is that you don't say how to make thieves wipes, because thieves, either isn't gonna make sense to them, or they're going to be like, oh, well, that person sells Young Living and they wanna sell me thieves, right? So think about like how, like what do those wipes do for you, right? So this is my, my stress-free solution to a clean, happy smelling bathroom, or something like that, right? And say it only takes three ingredients, put into your information here to get my recipe, right? Something like that, right? Think about it through the lens of the benefit to them. The benefit to you is that they know it's thieves, but they're not gonna know that until they talk to you, and that's a little further down the line. So, yes, teach them how to make thieves wipes, but teach them in the context and the language of what they're looking for, not what you want. Does that make sense? How to meditate, that's a great one, I like that. But give it, give it a timeline, right? How to, how to meditate in five minutes a day, or, you know, three steps to, you know, mastering a meditation schedule that doesn't feel stressful and works for you every time, right? Add a little bit to that. How to store veggies, ooh, I like that. So maybe this is like the, you know, the busy gal's guide to not wasting produce. There you go, that's great, I love it, it's a great idea. Is there a way to schedule appointments via GetOiling? So Lisa, if you actually go back and look at our YouTube channel, we actually taught a few videos back from this one, how to create a call booking funnel, and actually walked through the one that I use. And so, what we have, and we do have on our wishlist, big picture, and this is a really complicated thing, and, you know, even though Greg is like a super magician with this stuff, building a scheduler is really hard. So, we teach you how to embed Calendly, which would work the same as any other scheduler that you use, and show you how to actually set up a funnel that can have people apply for a call with you. And then, of course, you can, based on whether or not you want to have that call with them, you can then send them your booking page from your GetOiling site, or you can have that just available for people to click if you wanted to. Alright, what's the email address to use? So, it's really ideal if you have a custom email address, which we can help you set up, support@getoiling.com, if you have a custom domain, this would be an address on your domain. But, but absent that, you wanna use whatever email you have linked to your GetOiling account. That's gonna be the one that they receive emails from and reply to from your campaigns, so use that one. Alright, Debbie asks, in a campaign, if I choose to deliver via email and text, can it be delivered with a keyword response? To get these notes, reply yes to this email, or is that only for texts? So, yes, and this would be, Debbie, this would be something you would wanna have a premium or higher plan if you want this to happen inside of a single campaign. You can, we don't have a way right now to have an email response trigger a text campaign. However, if you were to set up a campaign that was a combination of email and text, and you were using those advanced features that I spoke about briefly, you could have an email that goes out, and then a text that goes out a couple minutes later, and you do have sequential text keywords as an option in your campaign setup, so that if you wanted to maybe have that trigger a separate campaign, you could do that. You could really, guys, you could be about as complicated as this, as you can with like almost any other, you know, marketing platform that exists out there today. So yes, you can do that, just not, you know, you can't just, you can't trigger text campaigns through emails. Alright. Let's see, Dana says, or Danae, sorry. I don't know a lot about lead pages, where do you use them? How do you post them on your Facebook page or send them out to people, and how do they find them? So, if you didn't see last week's first training in this series on landing pages, those are lead pages. Make sure that you go back and check that out, it is the video right before this one on our playlist on the YouTube channel, youtube.com/getoiling. And that really breaks down what those landing pages are. So lead pages are landing pages, those are the pages that turn strangers into leads, right? So we have a full breakdown on that on the video prior to this one, and that is ultimately where you've seen me talking about landing pages throughout this training, that's the, that's the thing we're talking about. And the way that you use them is really multi-fold, right? Like, this can be something that's in the signature line of your email, at the bottom of your blog post, bottom of your YouTube, connected to a Pinterest, you know, a Pinterest pin. It could be in your Linktree type thing, and you don't even need to have Linktree if you have us. We have a link page template in custom pages in GetOiling, and you can put a landing page link in there, so if people click on your link in Instagram, then now they can get, you know, whatever you're offering lead magnet wise that you want to deliver. You can also, of course, share those links on your Facebook if you want, so people can find them really just by however you send them out. Alright, how do you get your lead magnet in front of people? There he is, same question. Some other ways that you can do this is on the front page of your website, you can offer the thing, the lead magnet, and, you know, say, click here if you want to get my guide for XYZ. Really no insight to the types of things that you can do. So, the whole purpose of content marketing is, like I mentioned before, is breadcrumb trails, and content marketing is blog posts, videos, and social content. And all of those things serve the purpose, not of promotion, but of building credibility and trust and bringing people closer to you, right? Toward that, that one-on-one, where you share Young Living and they say yes, right? And so you've got all of this stuff, and when you're creating the content, it's doing the work for you with multiple people 24/7 all the time without you having to be there, so that when they're ready, they're coming to you, and now you spend the time with them, right? Does that make sense? Quick show of hands? I got you guys on that, right? That's, the whole purpose of this is that. So, so when you're creating that content, what you wanna do is obviously you serve them with that content, but then, you give them an opportunity to come a little closer, right? Follow the breadcrumb trail, go a little deeper down the funnel, and that's via putting this landing page, this funnel, that's the front door of the funnel, out there so that they can get the lead magnet, so that they get those calls to action, and get that information, and improves their life, and makes them trust you more, like you more, and want to work with you, okay? Alright, you say not to speak of Young Living or Gary, but are you still talking oil in general, perhaps? Perhaps, right? I'm not saying don't oil your lead magnet at all. I'm just saying, don't make it a fully oily lead magnet, because typically, what that's going to wind up looking and feeling like is that we are just really trying as quickly as possible to just move them over to, hey, hey, I wanna sell you some oils, right? Especially if you have any other content that indicates, or things on your profile that indicate that you are a distributor of Young Living oils, right? If it feels super obvious to them, it's gonna feel super obvious to them, and, I mean, maybe if they're already interested in YL, and they're ready, or curious, or whatever, then that might work, but the better route to take is to make it about them, right? So if, if you've got a way to make it oily and about them, great, but be holistic about it, right? Whole picture, focused on them and what they want, cuz that's how you build trust. And, and yeah, in terms of, especially importantly, like, you know, the more granular, specific, YL-focused language, like Gary and Mary, like ER, like Cede de Seal, like all this other stuff, they mean absolutely nothing to your people, right? And they won't mean anything to these people until you build the trust and relationship with them by showing up and being of service to them first, does that make sense? That's, that's our whole deal here. Alright, so, can you clarify the lead and the contact? Alright, thank you Holly for being here. What that means is, when you have a hashtag inside of that, like the link on a button, that's telling the system to do a thing, right? So if you put hashtag contact in, and I encourage you, go do this, create a custom page and do this, save it, nobody's gonna see it unless you share it with them. Go check it out. When you do hashtag contact on a button, or a link even, on a page on your site, this can be a blog, post, this can be your homepage, this could be a custom page of any kind, landing page. When you have hashtag contact, and they click that button, a box is going to pop up, and it's going to have your photo that you've added to my story and photo, and it's going to have your contact information, and tell them to enter their stuff to talk to you, okay? So that's contact. If you have hashtag lead on a custom page, that's the only place this works, on a custom page, you have hashtag lead, that's going to make the pop-up box come up on the custom page that you're going to adjust in the lead capture settings, in the settings of that custom page. Alright, so Allison says, so to start, create in pages, record, upload to Vimeo, and then go to GetOiling. Yeah, so plan it, and, you know, if you're on Mac, then use Pages, yes? Or any word processor, plan out what you're gonna do, have notes for yourself so that you don't, you know, fall down a verbal rabbit hole, especially if you're blue. And then, obviously, record, upload that Vimeo, yes? And then head over and follow the steps that you saw in this video, you got it. Alright, Toledo, how to change images in your site, I have some photos that are blurry. So if you have photos that are showing up blurry on your site, it may be because the place that you have, the place that you've uploaded them on your site requires a specific kind of resolution. We do have in different areas of the site, little, you know, those little, little black circles, a little eye, you hover over and it pops up some information. There will be recommendations for resolution, and this is size, you know, like this wide, or this proportion, this long, that kind of thing. And it could also be that it is too small of an image, that's usually the case, right? If it's stretched, or looking strange, or it's, you know, disproportionate, it's usually because it's the wrong dimensions. But if it's blurry, it may be too small or not the right quality of a photo to feature. So you may wanna shrink the photo down even, if it's, if you're able to, wherever it is on that given page, or see if you have a higher quality image to use in that instance. Alright, Lynn, how is the custom page I created through Go for Gold different from a funnel, or is it the beginning of a funnel system? So the thing about custom pages, Lynn, is that they can be anything on your site. A custom page, as I've shown today, is a means of delivering a lead magnet. So this would be, you know, like an article, or a place where you embed a video that people only get access to after registering on a landing page, alright? So, so that's custom pages, you could also make a custom page that is the homepage of your entire website. So, those are your options with a custom page. Now, as we taught last week, lead pages, landing pages, are the front page of your funnel, right? So, a funnel is landing page, where people opt in to get a thing that they want, lead magnet, the thing that they want, and then a campaign, which drips information and calls on them to reach out to you and initiate a conversation, okay? So what we're teaching here is exactly the same as what you learned in Go for Gold. What we taught in Go for Gold is actually how to create a guide that is a lead magnet, and of course, there's a landing page and a campaign that goes with it, right? That's module one in Go for Gold. So, so yeah, what we're talking about today is very similar to what you learned there. We've just broken it down a little bit more and giving you a few more options as to what you can use as a lead magnet. And definitely refer to the previous video to this one to learn more about landing pages and the different options that you have, because you can create those in landing pages, under contacts, or under my site settings and custom pages. Tammy asks, I got a lot out of the mapping your message workshop, I'm so happy. That was awesome, is there a way we can do a one-on-one with you to process through the outline? Shoot us an email, Tammy. And there, so from time to time, we do work, like on a one-on-one coaching capacity, where we have availability for it. So, we can have you connect with that process, and, you know, we could see what our options are from there, but just shoot us an email, support@getoiling.com, and they can connect you up with that, that, well, booking funnel, as it turns out. Be excited to chat with you. Alright, Carrie asks, what are the best ways to get traction with lead funnels? I can make a funnel, but who or where to send it? What place do you put it to get traction? Your content, your content is the most important place for you to put these funnels. So, it's, this is new, right? And new feels big, and new feels scary, and new feels like, oh god, how am I gonna do this, right? Get through this, because the bigger thing that you're actually going to be doing is committing to providing valuable content on a consistent basis, so that you have a breadcrumb trail, right? This is actually sort of a median point, if you will, in the process for them. They're going to find your YouTube videos, your blog posts, your pins, your Instagram, your Facebook, whatever, they're gonna find those things, engage with those things, then get more curious, then land at your landing page, right? So the point isn't to promote the landing page, the point is, and it's not to say that you can't, right? But in just a general scheme of content marketing, the point is for you to show up, being credible, being resourceful, being an expert at what you're an expert in, which is really just living your life the way that you know it's great, and helping others to do the same. When people who find that content and like you, and like what you have to say, they're gonna want what's in your lead magnet, they're gonna get into your funnel, those are gonna be the people who are most likely to wanna be on a call with you, hear about Young Living, and say yes, right? So, the traction is going to come from content, so get this thing done. You're gonna make a lot of these over time, right? So allow this to be a molehill and not a mountain, and then get into content creation so that you can be getting those leads. Content is something that you should absolutely be making if you're doing this consistently and you're using smart keywords. Really great, simple, easy, free trainings out there on the web for that, guys, for YouTube and for blogging. If you're making content, over time, you will start to attract people who are just searching for the answers that you know how to provide, and they find your funnels, and they find you, and they're ready to go. There are people that I know in Young Living who are doing this right now on a big level, and it's kind of amazing to see it happening. You can do this too, right? No matter where you are, who you are, what you've done in your life, you can do this too. So just get the, yes, get the funnel made, and just get out there and start making content that points to the funnel, because then the funnel points them to you, right? Alright, Holly says, I'm having huge technical issues, there's someone I can talk to and support, the email back and forth is slow. So we're actually, Greg is not on vacation anymore. I guess, Holly, is it something, maybe respond in the Q and A here? Is it something that maybe we can walk through here together? Cuz it's definitely, you know, a purpose of a call like this, we can look at that. So just let me know what the thing is. If it's something that might expose sensitive contact information or something like that, we may need to do that separately. But if you reach out to support and ask, say, hey, can I get on a call with somebody? Then there is definitely, you know, there's a path to that, that we can figure out, okay? Especially if, you know, if you're feeling like you're not getting what you need in the back and forth, we can definitely look at setting up a call. And if I can help you here, happy to do it. Just wanna make sure that we're not just getting into your account and like exposing, you know, sensitive information. Alright, Mary says, not on today's topic, is there a way, and can you show how to connect the Young Living blog in some way to our blog, or use some of their posts in our blog? Actually, this is on your blog setup page. Actually, let me see if I can get over to... I'll get over here and sign in and show you guys. Very, very, very simple to do this. Alright, so I'm in Jane's account, if you go over to blog posts right here, and we go to settings, oops. Alright, automatically show posts from another blog. What you're gonna do is actually, here, if you wanna plug in the Young Living USA blog, you just click that and you hit save changes, and that's going to automatically, when Young Living posts a new blog post, it's gonna show up in your feed, right? That's how you do that. Alright, Allison's gonna do her DIY faves, you could do a whole YouTube series on this, wouldn't that be amazing? Alright, Meg asks, how do I get past the confusion? Trying and following the training and slides step by step, I'm still getting so lost, I'm not techie, send an email, waiting to hear back. Alright, so, deep breath, right? It's really important that first, you're super clear on what you want this to do and how you want it to work out. Use the planner, write it out fully. That way, when you hit any kind of bumps in the road, it's only because you're confused about some kind of tech thing, which is usually a pretty quick and easy fix. Make sure that when you're coming to the computer and you're signing into your GetOiling account, you are 100% clear on what you're gonna say, how you want it to be said, and how you want it showing up and with what information, right? Then you come in, and then, and honestly, you guys, this, you know, the manipulating the text and making things look the way that you want them to, this is a learned thing. But if you come in knowing what you have to say, you're not trying to think creatively and technically at the same time. That is a path to absolutely just blowing out, you know, any of your patience and just feeling completely overwhelmed. So get really clear, if you wanna get past the confusion, get really clear and use the planner first. And then write out everything that you wanna write out, every word that you wanna write out. And then follow the steps in the slides, okay? That's it. Plan, write, and then follow the steps, and I promise you, it's gonna be a lot easier for you. And again, like if you, if you've got, if you're up to the point where you've got all the words and that you got all the copy, you got all the creative, and everything's ready, you like what it says, and it's good to go, and you're running into tech issues, this, you know, this becomes a perfect opportunity for us here on this work session to get into your account and make sure that the tech stuff is worked out so that everything connects, cuz that's really all we're doing is formatting and connecting once you're putting it into the system, right? So just make sure that you have got all of the planning steps done first, so that that gets easier. And if there is something specific that you are having a tech issue with, leave another message and Q and A here, and let's see if that's something that I can help walk you through. Again, just making sure that that doesn't cover any kind of sensitive information. And of course, support@getoiling.com. I know our inbox is kind of full right now. Everybody's really like kind of jazzed up branding their websites and getting a lot of stuff done, and our team has been really busy there. That's why they're not here on the call with me today, they're trying to get to all of you guys who have support questions that you've sent in. Alright, on the story- All right, on the store veggies idea, would you include, this is Jody's question, would you include using the fruit and veggie wash? You can mention products that you use in your lead magnets, absolutely. Just make sure that you are adding a lot of value beyond just saying, I use a Young Living product for this. Because that's just you saying like, I have a thing you could buy and I like it, you should too. And that, that's a, okay, well, that's nice. You want to make it something that's like, you know, for them. So make sure you're just being holistic about what you're offering in terms of value and that it's not something that's wholly contingent upon Young Living. Because again, you got to build trust first. All right, how to apply LOA in three easy steps? I don't know that I know what that means, but cool. I'm excited to see you when you make it. All right, Leslie asks, can we get our domain through GetOiling? I want to have myname.com. Yes, 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 support@goodoiling.com, absolutely. And if you've purchased a domain previously that you own, we can help you connect it up to your GetOiling site as well and get you your own custom email address, like yourname@yourname.com. Really great thing to have, really solid, easy branding thing that you can do. All right, Allison says, if I'm creating a guide in Pages, do I skip using a template because GoodOiling will do that for me? So if you're saying, so when you say Pages, I might need a clarification from you here. Pages is a word processor on Mac. If you're talking about creating a guide and custom pages inside of GetOiling, you don't skip a template. The template is actually, that's what I showed you how to use. That's what makes it easier for you. But you could start from a blank page if you wanted to and, you know, add a, you know, a section by section, the way that you want it to look. If you are in Go4Gold, which I believe you are, there are, I believe, resource bundles in there that actually, yeah, yeah, there is actually in the first module. There's a resource bundle in there of a guide that's already done that you just edit to your own liking and change out the images and all that kind of stuff. So you could use that, or you could create one and follow the exact steps that I've shown you today to create that. Now, if you're creating in Pages like the Mac app or like a word processor, that's what you would want to do to create a PDF. And if you go to getoiling.com forward slash getleads, you'll get access to that training that shows you how to do that. All right, Lisa says, how long should we run the lead magnet if it's not getting any traffic? Well, I guess the question here is really before we talk about changing the lead magnet, is how much traffic are you generating with your content, right? So if you're getting a good amount of traffic with your content, people are clicking, they're reading, but they're not, they're not opting in for the lead magnet, then you might want to consider swapping out the lead magnet. But the majority of the time, there's just not enough content that's pointing to it. This is something that does build up over time. But I would say, you know, make a, make a new lead magnet, you know, once a quarter, more if you're comfortable. But, you know, make it once every few months and just continue creating content. Content is really the thing that's going to bring people closer. The lead magnet is going to be sort of the thing that takes it over the top for them. All right, how do I change the website theme? I have a dropdown box. It only allows Young Living products. I don't want that there. Um, yeah, so what you would do is you would create a custom homepage. There's a great course on how to do that really beautifully. If you go to getoiling.com and scroll down to our Partner section, Allison Marshall did an amazing job. And there are so many beautiful GoodOiling front pages now, thanks to her, of actually showing you how to take a custom page and set it up and make that your GoodOiling homepage. So if you wanted to brand yourself entirely, you would want to create a custom page. And GetOiling, that is your homepage, and then set that up as your homepage using the custom menu feature. We have trainings on this. Be sure to visit the Help Center, the little green question mark box. Should be the very first place that you go with questions, guys, because there's a lot of answers in there. And the more you ask questions in there, the better we can make sure we're getting the answers in there if they aren't there already. But if they're not in there, then it's kind of hard for us to know. So, so go there and check that out. We also have videos about custom pages and creating your own homepage on GetOiling on our YouTube channel that'll show you how to do that. All right, could a Grow Workspace class be used as a lead magnet? Yeah, yeah, totally. Actually, again, speaking of our GetOiling YouTube channel, if you look for Sway Funnel, you search Sway Funnel, if you go to getoiling.com, sorry, youtube.com forward slash getoiling, and you search for Sway, we actually show how to take a Grow Workspace sway and turn that into the deliverable for a funnel. So we're actually embedding the sway on a page as opposed to a video. So it would look very much like the, the video lead magnet that I shared with you, except instead of a video, it's a sway. All right, how to find a good assistant to work on my page? Hmm, any tips or a list of available assistants? Not sure, but this is a very good question. This is one that we might want to just pop over into support, see if they know of anybody. And guys, if you have someone that's working with you that is an assistant, who, you know, who's helping and supporting you and creating your site, then that may be a resource that we can kind of collectively start building together. We do, so you know, have again, some one-on-one custom site builds. Sometimes folks do coaching with me. It really just depends. If that's a conversation she'd like to initiate, head over to support@goodoiling.com and we can make sure that you're pointed in the right direction. All right, Allison says, if I'm doing a guide for beginner homeschooling, love that. Could that be a list of websites with short descriptions for curriculum planner schedulers, chore charts, as long as I start with my backstory? Also have past schedules from all my years of homeschooling that might be abuse. How would I include those more of an opt-in, because I don't think everyone would want that? Allison, from what you're sharing right here, it almost sounds like you could create a course on getting started with homeschooling. And then maybe just take one of these things and, and offer that up as a lead magnet, you know? So here are the top three things you need to know if you plan on homeschooling this fall. You know, here's my shopping list for homeschooling. Here's, you know, here's my breakdown of all of the curriculum options, no matter what state you're in. Like just pick one thing and have that be it. And then, of course, have everything else point toward a call with you, right? You know, hey, I've, I've got a way for you to like chill out your kids and you could even make some money at home while you're homeschooling. You know, it just depends on sort of what your brand is and what direction you want to go with that. I would err on the side, like I mentioned in the video, of short and specific and giving them an immediate benefit. That's going to be the most powerful thing to do. You don't want to overwhelm them with all the things. You want to kind of allow them to gradually open up into all the things, right? It's why we don't put Young Living out front and center. It's completely overwhelming. Some people have, you know, ignorantly held thoughts about the industry or the company that are, you know, going to be roadblocks for them. Some people have, you know, just a need to like feel like they can have one thing under control before they start looking at other big questions that you want to ask them, right? So give them one thing and, and start developing trust from there and give them a breadcrumb trail to follow that leads to working with you. All right, Juliet asks, in the Get to Know You section of your pages, should we be removing any mention of Young Living and using essential oils as well? Um, so if you're looking to brand yourself and do content marketing, I really do recommend that, yes, that you brand you, because that's why people buy. People will fall in love with Young Living and stay with Young Living once they're in. But in order to get them in, if they're a stranger right now, you've got to build trust with them. They need to see that you're someone who's not just there to sell them something. So it is important that you brand yourself as someone who is capable of helping the person that you want to be helping and who's dedicated to that. Obviously, you know, the oils are a passion, right? But they're kind of a means to an end, are they not? Like they're, they serve something, they serve you and they can serve these people, but they help you do something bigger for the folks in your life, don't they? That's what you need to be talking about, is that bigger thing, the benefit of the benefit, if you will. So, so yeah, make the things that you're talking about that. If you're just getting started, then by all means, use, you know, use the templates that are already uploaded on the site and so on. That's perfectly fine. You could especially use those as sharing tools, or great for sharing tools. But if you want to get into content marketing and using funnels, you want to really start thinking about branding yourself and having the oily conversations, be in the one-on-one conversations that you're having after people have engaged with your content and decided that you're someone that they really believe can help them. All right, can we use a course from Grow Workspace as a lead magnet? I'm not sure what the course would be from Grow Workspace. Maybe it's a campaign, it probably is. If so, then perhaps. Although I do know that a great deal of Grow Workspace's content is a little more member-focused as opposed to lead-focused. So just be mindful of that content. I really love, both for private clients and just for teaching you guys, showing you how to use Grow Workspace as a way to automate your member education. Because most folks who are getting into Young Living, especially once you hit about like silver and gold, you get into management mode and you stop growing your business and you plateau. And the reason why you do that is because you're spending all of your time being mother and teacher and, and motivator to your team and not bringing in new business, right? And a big way that you do that is by putting on the educator hat and doing all the teaching. If you can plug in great resources, which Grow Workspace has, that teach people and allow you to point to resources, then you're in a really great place. You can absolutely, again, use their content in a funnel for leads, but just make sure that it's written in such a way that delivers them a, you know, an immediate, specific benefit. It's not just an oily one. Does that make sense? All right, Julie, how would you send an email to someone who sends a text or email for a campaign or new member to fill out about you and interest surveys so I would have all of their information? Hmm, it really kind of depends on what you're looking to do here. Um, you do have the ability in your, in custom pages, and this is something that we taught in the, a little bit about in the previous training, but more so in the, the Call Booking Funnel training and other custom pages trainings on our YouTube channel. Is, you know, you can have those custom fields where you can say, you know, what's your favorite color? Or, you know, what's your biggest goal or something like that? Um, I don't know. I, I really think that if, if you're wanting to learn more about somebody, you should be asking for a call with them. You know, unless you've got a list of 20,000 people and, and you're just looking to narrow down to the people who are just the specific criteria. And even then, I wouldn't necessarily recommend that you just, you know, poll them to find out like, you know, what they're into. I, I think that what we're talking about here is, is rapport building, and that's something that you really should be doing one-on-one. So instead of maybe looking at how you can get all of their about information in one place, you know, your leads specifically, look at how you can quickly move over to a conversation. Maybe ask one of these questions as one of those spear questions in an email in your campaign saying, hey, hit reply and tell me X thing about you, so that you're initiating a conversation with them one-on-one. That's always going to be far more valuable than just trying to automate conversations. What you're doing in campaigns is automating opportunities for people to start conversations with you. But those questions about them, them telling themselves about you, that really needs to be in the context of a one-on-one exchange. All right, do you recommend uploading our, our video to Vimeo or YouTube? Vimeo. If this is for your lead magnet, it is Vimeo because it's private. If it's on YouTube, why would they give you their email, right? Why would they opt in? All right, Mary says, I have a custom email that you created. When people reply to an email that I send from GetOiling, it shows in my regular email account. Should I reply from within that email or go back to GetOiling and send a reply? All right, so I'm going to go ahead and answer this. Um, so this depends, right? If, if it's a very simple and it's a very personal and it's back and forth kind of thing, then just use your regular email. If it's something that is more lengthy that you would commonly repeat, then head over and send them a saved reply from inside of your GoodOiling account. It really just kind of depends on the nature of the response. If it's personal and it's actually starting a conversation, then by all means, just stay in your email account with this. But if they're like, well, can you tell me more about the blah, 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 blah? And you have, actually have like a saved reply that like explains all of this stuff, then use that by all means. But more often than not, you really just want to get into the one-on-one personal, have the relationship, get on the call and sign them up, right? All right. And then the second question, when I give people my email address, can I give them the GetOiling one? I've tried using it and nothing shows up in my email, or is it just to use to send an email? So what you want to make sure that you do, and you may need to reach out to support for this, or they may have a support article to share with you. When you, if you have a custom email address from us, which it sounds like you do, you know, so if it's mary@mary.com, then you want to make sure that you have that plugged into your email client. So if you're using Outlook, you need to have that custom email address that you got from GetOiling plugged into that, into your Outlook account so that you can send and receive emails from there. All right, Holly says, I'm trying to put an event code on one of my custom pages and it says it does not recognize the pixel I've put under Analytics. This is going to be one for support, Holly, sorry. You need to support@getoiling.com. I am really honestly not sure about that. Do you make sure that you have the entirety of the code correctly copied and that you're putting it into the correct box? Maybe if it's not working in one, try the other. I know there's several different options there. This, that's kind of not my, it's not my purview. But yeah, support@goodoiling.com. Greg and them are back today and they are feverishly working to answer all these tickets today. So definitely head over there for that one, and I'm really sorry, I don't have that answer. Um, do you know if GoodOiling or any of your clients have successfully used Facebook event code? I'm, I don't know, honestly. I'm not sure that I know what a Facebook event code. If you're talking about for Facebook ads, then yes, we use them. But I think that that, it's important that you have that tied up correctly inside of your ads account, if that's what you're talking about. Ultimately, all you really have to do, if this is for Facebook ads, is to have your ads pixel in the account and then you tell Facebook what you want it to read. And that's how that works. I'm not really sure what the event codes thing is though. So definitely reach out to support@goodoiling.com for that. All right, Jen asks, not today's topic, but I was looking at the GoodOiling Prospects campaign and there are links in the first two messages that I tried to view to see what they would get, but it kept sending me to an uneditable campaign message. Did I copy the campaign so I could edit my own version, so I wasn't trying to edit the original campaign? So Jen, you can actually apply the campaign to yourself if you want to see those. Just make your, your own contact. So with your email address that you want to use, make a contact and apply that campaign to yourself. And you can't edit the links that are in there, meaning like the, the system pages that go off and have like the questions and the stuff on them. Those are written, those are written to, you know, be sent from you if you want to use them that way. But you can see what that looks like and how people can interact with them if you opt into it or opt yourself in by adding that campaign to your own contact. All right, is there a way to have the Young Living blog embedded on a custom page instead of just on the blog main homepage? You could link to it, but I am not aware of a way that you can embed a blog on a custom page. That's a bit different. That may be one to follow up with, with Greg on. But that's, yeah, usually a blog is just going to be in the blog. The way that the coding works is via RSS feed, which is a blog-specific language. And then, of course, on custom pages, that's a whole other animal. I don't even know what code that is, honestly. I know how to make it work in the little ways that I do, but I'm not a coder. So no, my, my short answer is probably not, but you might want to check with support. All right, Meg, thank you so much. I'll be planning out everything first and then go to my site to build it. Okay, awesome. I'm really excited to see what you make and I'll see you in the student group with that. Um, yeah, excellent. Excited to see that, guys. Remember, plan first, write it all out first. If you don't feel tech confident, do all the work and then get to the site to plug it in. Do not try to create something looking at a blank editor screen on a tech platform that confuses you. That is an absolute road to stall and burnout and frustration, and we don't want that for you. This can be fun and easy and simple for you if you do the pre-work first, which thankfully for all of us, all you got to do is write it out using a word processor, which we can all do. All right, let's see. Oh, LOA, Law of Attraction. Yes, thank you. I totally forgot that acronym. Excellent. That's, that's actually a really great thing to do. But remember, remember, a lot of people aren't necessarily going to know what Law of Attraction even is, right? So if you tell them that you know three steps to help them get anything they want in life, right? Or to whatever it might be that fits your brand, then that's what you're going to want to do. I think it's a great idea for a lead magnet. All right, Lisa says, I have 150 clicks as of yesterday. So I think what you're saying is, is that, that you've got 150 clicks and people aren't opting in. People will be clicking on the lead magnet and they're not opting in. So, so in that case, yeah, freshen things up. I would also like just take a, take a look at it, right? Like ask yourself, or, you know, show it to some peers, like have some conversations. Like, is this something that fits the criteria that we've been talking about? Are you offering something that really feels like a direct and immediate, quick, simple benefit, right? Is there, is there a quick win in there for the person that you want to be helping? And is it really clear to them on your landing page what it is that they'll get, right? And, and why they would want to get it? Make sure that you're evaluating those things before you go reinventing the wheel and get some feedback. Feel free, shoot that to us. We can give you some, you know, some insights into that as well if you've got that already made. We can't tell you what to say if you haven't put anything down. But if you've got something made and you would like a little bit of advice on tweaking it, then why don't we just shoot us an email? And we can take a quick look at that and make some recommendations for you. All right, Tammy says, making sure I'm on the same page. Lead magnet is like an umbrella and content are underneath. We add content often. All right, so... So, hmm, what's the best way to put this? Your brand is an umbrella. Alright. Your brand is you, your personal brand. And you talk about all kinds of things, right? You can imagine, I'm swirling all of these little things around here, right? This is your content. Your content are like these little mini versions of you that are out there talking that can be found anywhere all over the web. And the more content you create, the more opportunities there are for people to interact with these little versions of you. And I look so silly right now. Alright, so, um, the opportunity is here in the middle, right? There's, there's sort of this little bubble around here. Uh, the lead magnet is there, right? So the landing page is where they go. So you get all this content and you're like, oh, hey, I got something that's really going to be helpful for you. And if you really like this content, this stuff, I look so ridiculous. Um, if you really like this content, then you're going to want to go here, right? And then once they go there and they're like, yeah, I want that thing, then they get to you, right? It leads to you. So, um, so it's not so much that the lead magnet is the umbrella. The lead magnet is the, the cheese. The lead magnet is the cake. If your, if your content is a breadcrumb trail or an appetizer, hey, your content's the appetizer, your lead magnet is the steak. Okay. Uh, and then of course, um, you know, the, the buffet is in living. I don't know. I'm having fun with this today, clearly. So, um, so yeah, the idea here is, is that you create a bunch of content so that you can attract as many people as possible. And the ones who are most attracted are going to say yes to the lead magnet or reach out to you directly. And then of course, in that funnel, once they said yes to the lead magnet on the landing page, they're going to have all these calls to actions and, and start to understand why it would, would be important for them to speak with you one-on-one and to work with you. Alright, and yes, you do want to add content often because that's how you're going to get found without just having to do that one-on-one prospecting people in the Facebook inbox and the DMs all the time, right? We don't want that, right? You don't want to spend five, 10 hours a day in your DMs hoping to find somebody who's interested enough to have a conversation right now. You put content out there so that people arrive in your inbox saying, hey, tell me more about that. And those are the people who are not going to waste your time, who are not going to go to you and who are most likely to say yes and now. That's the whole purpose of it. Alright, Lori says, somehow on my contact button, when it clicks, I always see my test email info I entered. Do I only see that or does everyone see that clicks the link? Alright, so if you have a correct email address in your, uh, in your Good Oil account, in your sort of account setup, that's going to be the one that shows up for them when they click contact. Now, if you have information that's populating in fields, um, that's something that's just on your computer, right? That's not what your prospects are going to see. Alright, I just posted surviving summer sway from Grow Workspace. Toledo, that would be a fabulous thing to share, I think. So go check out the sway trainings on our YouTube channel. That'll show you how to embed a sway link uh, on a custom page, just like we did with a video. Uh, and it's actually not embedding a sway link. It would be the code from the sway. So there's, it's, it's a little tricky, but it's not that hard at all, I promise. So watch the sway funnel, uh, training on our YouTube channel and that'll show you how to make a sway lead magnet. Alright, so what's the difference between a domain and our Good Oil site? So when you sign up for Get Oil, you get, uh, you get your own replicative website, right? It's ready to go out of the box. It would be meg.getoil.com, right? And meg.getoil.com is going to have all these beautiful themes. They're ready to share. You can use that, share that link right out of the box, right? You can blog there. You can do everything that you want. Meg.getoil.com. Now, if you wanted to brand yourself and you wanted to show up as live naturally be well. And you want your website to be live naturally be well.com, that then becomes the address that people type in to get to whatever you've set up to be your homepage on Get Oil. Alright, so a domain is simply an address, right? So your address before you have a custom domain is yourname.getoil.com. You can use that forever if you wanted to. But if you wanted to brand yourself, you would get a custom domain and then instead of typing in yourname.getoil.com, they would go to yourwebsitename.com and see whatever you have chosen to set up as the homepage on your Good Oil site. Alright, same request for an assistant. Those of you who are using VAs and have intel to share, please send us information and we are happy to compile that and make that available to the community. Alright, another question, is it possible to have someone critique our website content and visual appearance? Hey, if you want a hot seat, send us an email. We can get together on a weekly work session. If you want a review of your funnel, we put this, this is an invitation that goes out every week and we're dead serious about this, you guys. You get emails from us that send you the replay and all this stuff and there's always a question in there. Do you want help? Do you want us to look over your stuff? Send us an email. We will put you on the calendar. We will look over this together. We'll do this live. And we'll, and we'll break down your copy and we will give you insights and, and you'll have me doing that. Alright? But the deal is we got to do it here so everybody can benefit. Alright, so send us an email and ask to be on the weekly work session to have your website looked at, right? And we could totally do that. That's why we set these up. It's not just for me to be here and teach you and be a talking head, but it's for us to work together. So send us that. We will set that up together. Absolutely. Alright, is there a video that details how to remove the Get Oil from the footer? Sorry if I missed this, asking because I feel it. If people see powered by Get Oil, they'll immediately conclude the focus is oils. Yeah, so if you have a custom homepage, um, if you have a custom page anywhere on your site, the footer is, uh, you remember I've showed you like, you know, don't use the header, don't use the footer when we're creating landing pages, lead pages and stuff. Just don't use the footer. So on your custom page, don't use the footer, right? And you have the ability to, um, I believe it's, uh, under my site settings. Let me actually make sure I'm correct about this. You do have, um, in the customize my site menu, maybe there's, I'm not the most knowledgeable about all the tech things. Let me see. Yeah, I mean, it's going to be branded to you basically if you, on your custom pages, uh, don't use the footer and you use a custom page without a footer as your homepage, you should be good to go from there. And you wouldn't use in that case like a landing page. You would make landing pages out of custom pages. Alright, how can I get Grow Workspace? Is something included in my membership? Okay, yeah, so you don't know about Grow Workspace yet. Uh, they're awesome. They're one of our content partners. We actually have several who we love, who we have featured on this session before. If you go to get oiling.com and you scroll down until you see partners, you'll find Grow Workspace, you'll find Modern Companion, Wild Customer Delight, Martha Creji, Alison Marshall. We've got great people that work with us that create educational resources for you to learn how to grow. And then of course, um, resources that you can use to leverage in your business to teach your members on autopilot. Really cool stuff. So head over to our website and then scroll down to partners. Alright, can we link both the US and Canadian Young Living blog to our Good Oil page? It is my understanding at this point in time, Juliette, that you can only link one to your page. I would maybe if it's really important to you that you do that, uh, then shoot a message over to support at Get Oil. I'd be curious though, um, so here's, here's the thing, right? If you're using your Get Oil site for the sole purpose of providing education and service to your existing Young Living members, then it would make sense to populate the Young Living blog on your own site because that kind of gives a one-stop resource for your members. But if what we're talking about today and in this series about funnels, attracting people to you, branding yourself, then you probably don't want to feature any blog but your own and, and things that are directly beneficial to your ideal person. If you want to use your blog to generate leads, you probably don't want to incorporate the Young Living blog at all. But like I said, if you are serving, uh, you're primarily using your Good Oil site to serve your members, then by all means incorporate, uh, the RSS feed of Young Living because they have great information. Why would you need to go write about Young Living products if they're already doing a great job, right? But if you want to incorporate both, that's a conversation that we would need to probably include Greg. And I don't know that that's something that we can do. So, um, or how to do it at least. So support at good oiling.com and we can get that one figured out. So sorry, it's just me today. You got what's in my brain. Alright, uh, let's see, it's been running for a week, Lisa said. Do I send an email to support? So it depends on what you need. Um, let's see, if you wanted some feedback on it, uh, just do what we were mentioning there. Send a, send a message. Just let us know you want to be on weekly work session. What we'll just, what we'll have you do is send us the pages that you want to have reviewed and we can confirm what date you'll be able to be on and we'll make sure that as soon as we're done with the training portion of our call, that we can immediately get into screen sharing with you and showing exactly, you know, going through exactly everything that you want to work on together. Awesome. You guys are great. Thank you for sticking around. Julie says, I'm just wanting more content on my blog page to look fuller until I start writing my own blogs. I mean, honestly, I, I don't, you don't need to have a bunch there. I mean, the, the most important thing that you can have is, is the stuff that's relevant to your people, right? It's really quality over quantity. Um, having a body of work with blogs is great and it is something that you will develop over time. But there's nothing less than of you having your first one. Because what you're going to find over time is that your first one may wind up being the most impactful one that you ever wrote, right? You never know which one is going to be the one that's absolutely going to take off and connect with the right people that you really want to be connecting with. So, um, if, if it's just about like putting more stuff in there, don't worry about that. Just focus on consistently delivering that content and speaking in the best way that you can and committing to being your best at delivering that value to the people that you want to serve and they're going to love what you share and you're going to have so many wonderful conversations, not just with people who are, um, you know, who, who like the specific stuff, but people who will surprise you, right? I used to make videos on YouTube, um, once a day for a period of time and once a week. Beyond that, after I started creating momentum and, you know, I was teaching people how to be more successful in network marketing. This is going back to like 2012. And I remember some of the most amazing responses that I got were not even ones that were tied to the direct growth of my business. My business grew directly from the work, the, the content that I was creating without a doubt. But the most meaningful stuff that happened as a result of me creating content were the heartfelt gratitude messages that I would get from people, you know, just being, being thanked for giving them permission to look at life differently and to care about themselves and to believe in themselves. Like, don't stop putting yourself out there because you don't think you have what it takes. You do. And there's someone that needs to hear you right now. So just commit to showing up consistently and just being your best. And you're probably going to find that some of your oldest, crappiest content that you weren't really great at in the beginning might be the ones that really transformed somebody's life. It's really powerful when that happens and it will happen for you. So guys, again, thank you so much for being here. Thank you for all of your great questions. We'll be back in next week's video with our final in the series of, uh, of our funnel 101, which is campaigns. So make sure that you've got your planner done, follow those slides and we'll be back next week to tie it all together with your campaign. See you next week, guys.